I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, no God in school.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Here, Cowell?
Here, whatever.
Mr. Lanacy?
Hello.
Mrs. Mack?
Here.
Mr. Strang?
Okay. I need somebody to make the motion, call for executive session.
I'll make a motion.
For medical, financial credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. You got your first and your second? And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to return back to open session. We just had some executive business. So we'll return to 7:04. Would you like to review the agenda?
Sure. Good evening and welcome to our February agenda. We appreciate you coming out to our meeting, especially our first grade families. One of the first things we'd like to feature tonight is our recognition of students, which we do through our royal recognition program. That will be through Mrs. Wallace's class. And later on, if you do stay for the rest of the meeting, we do have a presentation on our January data, as well as our preliminary budget report. So, very exciting.
Thank you. So, it looks like we're moving right into royal recognition. Do you want to pledge allegiance?
Oh, sorry.
Do it again.
No, I did. I should, I'll take my own personal time.
That'd be awesome. So, actually, I'll turn it over, really, as you know, what's been great about this year is we've been pretty consistent in nominating students and classes for the royal recognition. As you know, that's a board tool that we use to recognize our community members, especially our school members and our students, for great work that we want them to acknowledge. So we do localize school pieces, but it's really great that we have a chance for the board to recognize those students as well. So, Mrs. Wallace, actually, two months ago, I believe, made the recommendation of her class, and I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Wallace, because what she has made is, once again, far surpasses me simply describing the process of nominations. So, Mrs. Wallace, I'm going to turn it over to you. And your lovely students.
Welcome. Thanks for coming out. I am proud and happy to recognize my class for their writing improvement throughout this year. They have increased their stamina. They are, they are now able to write. They've gone from writing for a few minutes to 20 to 30 minutes at a time without complaints most of the time. They have increased their length of writing, so instead of writing a sentence, we have gone to multiple pages, which you'll see on this presentation in a moment. And they've increased their vocabulary, so the language that they use within their writing, they challenge themselves. So, they, they, they take safe risks. They, they like that challenge, and I thought it was definitely time to honor them and recognize them for their hard work, because they do it with great attitude and a cheerful, well, a cheerful attitude every day. It's probably one of, besides reading and teaching reading groups, writing workshop is one of my favorite times of the day. So, without further ado, we have a little presentation. We do a, a writing unit. So we started with a launch of the writing workshop, and we had a publishing celebration where we invited fourth grade in. And then, we did small moments, and we had another publishing celebration at the end of that unit, and then we moved into how-to writing, which we have a few examples of some how-to writing here. So this is sort of our publishing celebration for the end of this unit. So here are some pictures of our first writing celebration. We invited fourth grade in. So the students came in, and our students read to the fourth graders. Their pieces weren't so long, this was back at the end of September, but they were super excited to share the writing piece that they chose to publish. All right, so, like I said, we just finished our writing unit for how-to, and I have four students that read their pieces, which you get to enjoy now. Oh, not that one.
How to set first you get done, sled from the chair. Next you walk until you get to the top of the hill. Last you get to the very top and then you sled down the hill. Who's getting the shower? That's what you would do. Then try to go to the bathroom. Then let's go to the bathroom. Then get a, then get a bed. Then put your blankets on, and then you go to sleep. How to build a house. First, you buy boards. Next, you pour the concrete. Then you need to use the boards for the walls. Then you need to build a roof. Then you need electric. How to babysit by Rosalie. First, ask a parent if you can babysit her kids or kids. If she says yes, you get the job. Bring some kids snacks at the table. Play with the kids and let the kids watch TV. Put the kids to sleep for four minutes. Play for a few 17 minutes. Soon it will be time to go for the kids, and you might get paid 20 bucks.
All right, so, in the interest of time, I couldn't have everybody because of the length of their compositions that they're now writing. So I had some friends tell me what they love about writing.
Our favorite part of writing is calling pictures.
That was fun.
My favorite part of writing is working words. I like fixing up my writing. The worst thing about writing is public celebration.
We love public celebration. Lady's cool.
All right, so ladies and gentlemen, you may come back and sit.
Okay, so, boys and girls, nicely done. As you know, part of our tradition of the royal recognition is we do have the board members stand, and we'd like to present you, Mrs. Wallace's class certificate, that says at the bottom, showing stamina in writing, increased length of composition, and use of challenging words when writing for a variety of purposes. So that, again, the video said it much better than, of course, we could, but we had to put something there, and that really does capture the great work you've done. So, students, we're going to ask you to come up. We're going to go with our traditional high-five, I think, that seems to go over well, more than the handshake. And Mrs. Wallace will have you call their name. And students, if you could, listen carefully, we're going to have you stay standing over here by these two bookshelves, because we always like to take a picture of you after you have your certificate to put on the website. So again, we'll start with our first student.
All right, so I'm going to read all of these, in case I haven't seen some of the children come in. Anthony Adams, Emalina Akats. Come on up, Emmy.
Jacob Demarest. Evelyn Knight. Jade Kuhn. Lillian Kuhn. Hunter Levine. Sophie Ring. Ryan Smithson, Florida. And Gage Wagner.
Nicely done, Mrs. Wallace's class. So, boys and girls, thank you so much for standing here. How about if we could have you hold your certificates out by our bellies? Oh, yeah, let's see here. What do you think, Mrs. Mack? How can we, you know? You know, we might be able to...
I was thinking, like, can we press the door?
Yeah, maybe the door. Let's do the door, yes.
Yeah, the door squeeze over the door.
Yeah, I knew someone was sitting there. As if we're like, thank you. All right. I knew, I knew this would be a better idea. So, guys, we're going to have you. Maybe ask some people, how we ask some people to kneel down? Any of you want to kneel down? And then, okay, we can put our certificates.
Here, you can help grab. Come over here for a second. So we're in a squat, just squat. Well, I'll say, but I'll get one from here, and then, parents, if you'd like to get one, we'll have it over. So, certificates out by our bellies? Okay? How about over this way, boys and girls? One, two, three. Excellent. Stay still. Perfect. I'll back up for the photo. Any families want to join us up here? Photos are good? Nicely done. Thank you for joining us. Good job, buddy. Last one.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, it was just for the, the bookshelves weren't happening, yeah. Now you got a vision.
With their toll, it's fine.
You got a good vision. That's true, see? Next one.
Yeah. For the screen, for sure. Just turn the projector off, and screen.
We're going to get real good at it. Mrs. Wallace, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And families, we thank you for joining us. If you'd like to stay for the meeting, you certainly may, but if this, if you'd like to exit us, that's fine, we'll just, we'll give you a minute if you want to.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being here. We understand.
Now you're going to be on the website.
I already told her in the corner, you eat three drinks?
That was the best.
One, two, a vodka, and one of those creamed sugar.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. I'll take this down to my district. It's really awesome.
I love it.
Thank you.
Great job.
Yep, that's, I wouldn't change it any other way, man. Be safe, guys.
She's mine. She just took off while I was getting my coat on.
Running all over, lady. Oh, my goodness.
From carrying her in, I carry it. Where you going? We need to go.
Thanks again, Mrs. Wallace.
Now that we have a moment of silence, I think we want to, we'd like to take a moment of silence to remember Rich Gubulli. He is a, an alum here. I graduated with him from here, so we could just take a moment. Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move along to 1.6, approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. We only had one last month, January 19th, 2017. Somebody like to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor? 1.7, acceptance of the financial reports. We have three this month. We have the internal claims auditors report for January 2017, the monthly treasurer's report with budget transfers, and the revenue report as of 12/31/2016. Somebody make a motion? Any questions, concerns, discussion? No? 1.8, building use. Looks like we have two groups on, on New York State PTA and Devil Cats. Somebody like to make a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
1.9, visitors and communication. I know I didn't receive any communication. Anybody else receive anything? No? Okay. Then B, opportunity for the public to be heard. Anybody signed up? No? 2.0, reports to the Board of Education. 2.1, Board of Education reports and updates. The Board does have a bit of an update. At our, at our January meeting, we unanimously approved a resolution allowing Dr. Reardon and I to negotiate an amendment to his employment contract, and I am very happy to announce that we have agreed in principle to a new contract that will keep Dr. Reardon as superintendent until at least 2022. Our attorney is still working on the final document, which we will vote on when complete. All details will be available once it's approved by the Board. I would like to say Dr. Reardon has been excellent in all aspects of his performance. He has developed relationships with everyone, students, staff, parents, the community at large, and we are very glad that we were able to secure his service. So, anybody else wants to add anything?
Couldn't be happier. Thank you for having me.
Happy to have you. Excellent addition to the district.
Look forward to staying.
2.1A, Stephanie Carbone, looks like NWEA, January testing. I don't know if you had anything to add first?
Oh, just, once again, I appreciate you having me. Again, I'll say it again.
Can't say it too much.
That's exactly.
Okay, good evening. We finished the second round of NWEA testing about mid-January. I think it went pretty smoothly. This was my second go-around, so I didn't freak out as much. I felt pretty confident. Mother Nature threw some curveballs with some snow days and delays, which extended our administration a little bit, but everyone got tested and submitted, so it's good. What I did was I kept the chart from last time we met, and I just added the winter scores on, so you can really see how our kids have grown alongside the norms. So for the, this is math. This is the, the normative data. Winter, this is us, the yellow, the yellowish gold, and this is the national norms for children. It was 2015 norms, taking it at the same time. So we're really focusing on the last two bars. As you can see, in many, many of our grades, we are higher than the national norm. Those grades that are falling just shy, it is really like very small percentages that we're up under. Our second graders rocking it, doing fantastic. In our middle school, it's nice, they're consistently scoring above the norm, and I know that middle school population sometimes, it can be tricky to provide service, so I think we're starting to find a really nice balance of how we're instructing our middle school friends. Here's ELA. Same thing. Winter, our scores are in the oranges-yellow, and the national norms are in green. Looking really good. Our students are outperforming the norm, or just a hair below, but our trend is consistently going up, so that's really good news. You know, we take this as just one piece of information, because this was just one day, one moment in time, but using this combined with our state testing and classroom performance, we get a really good picture of our kids. Just taking a look at the percent of our students that are scoring at or above the norm grade level rate, our kids are doing pretty well. It's a really small band here, it's from 40% to 72%. That's why the difference looks substantial, but it's really not, it's the way it's formed. You can see our second, seventh, eighth grade, math really doing well. So our kids are really scoring close to average. You know, there's areas definitely where we can see some improvement made, and the teachers were working on that. Yesterday, I did a presentation at the faculty meeting going over NWEA and sharing with the teachers some really, really great reports that NWEA offers, which allows them to really dig into their student scores and not just look at the number, but see what are their strengths, what are the weaknesses, and it allows them to really group kids appropriately and differentiate with instruction to, you know, build the foundations, skills of some of our learners that are having some challenges, but on the flip side, also challenge our high-achieving learners to let them continue to grow. So, we have these scores, you know, the scores are only as good as what we do now. So our data team is met with each teacher, we review the results. Students that met the criteria for continued AIS RTI remediation were identified, and a written notification will be received from Dr. Yodis. Our AIS RTI providers, they're adjusting their schedules to accommodate the change in support. Some students receive, will receive less support based on their performance. Some children might need a little boost, they'll have an increase. The data results are also being used to assist teachers in determining specific areas to challenge high-achieving students. This information is used as one data point to assist teachers in grouping their instruction, and that's what we really targeted yesterday. And it was fun to see, the teachers were really interested in going in and seeing how their kids did on different skill. And as a district, it'll allow us to see kind of trends across grades to see if there's any gaps in our curriculum. Just wanted to highlight the middle school, because I feel like sometimes we don't talk about them enough, and they're really doing a great job. In seventh and eighth grade, there were 20 students that were identified last time based on their performance on this and New York State test, needing some additional assistance in math and ELA. So our tutorial sessions are established to help those students, and that's during the school day as a period. And, Dr. Reardon, you can probably speak more upon the program that they have established. They're using technology to address the skills in tutorial.
Sure. One of the things we tried to do differently this year with the schedule was, rather than it being designated as a AIS period, for example, like usually our period nine, where we basically took students that were identified through state tests or through NWEA, we tried to basically use that as a kind of, as a positive and make it a heterogeneously grouped class of basically students that require intervention, some that require nothing, some that require enrichment, and make it kind of more of a skills class, if you will. So rather than just taking your, your seven students or your nine students and putting them in a room for a supplemental period of math, the research has shown that that extra period didn't necessarily equate to a better score. We're trying to embed those skills through other means. For example, one teacher uses another computer program, MobiMax, to actually bring up scores. Others use writing assignments within that tutorial, like for example, you know, summarizing an article in a newspaper, using a debate as a form, using film as a means to kind of do a factor opinion essay. Again, embedding the skill development rather than, okay, we're going to use this period as a, to do supplemental worksheets, or to kind of just review what was done in the math class before. So it's been kind of a unique approach, and it also has benefited our students to have kind of a less tracked schedule.
And it appears it's really having some, a positive effect, just from the last administration. In math, seven students, in an ELA, eight students have already increased their scores and their performance enough to either be receiving no support or decrease support in those areas. So we're seeing a really positive effect on that. And like I said earlier, our seventh and eighth grade is consistently scoring above the norms in both ELA and math. the norms in both ELA and math. Very good news coming from data. We'll do this again in June.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
And Board members, what we'll do is we'll share that through Google Docs.
Okay.
So you have a paper copy, or should you have a live copy that you can see in color? That sounds good.
Thank you.
And if community members would like a copy, we certainly can make one as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Carbone.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Moving along, 2.2, the District Superintendent Program Report. That's you?
Sure. Actually, as I will log back in. Stephanie, thank you for doing that.
Oh.
No, I mean, thank you for your presentation, not logging out. That wasn't sarcasm.
I didn't mean to please.
No, no, that was, that was meant like, I didn't mean to please. Let's start this one off right.
Sir.
So, no, as we load in, and as you can see, what's kind of exciting about that data point, as we kind of get things set to go into our budget piece, what's exciting is it is one data point. Obviously, we use local assessments and obviously, but it is kind of a nice universal measure to use to see if what we're doing is working and what's not. And again, to credit to Dr. Yodis for again hosting those data team meetings and making that happen, where we do have a chance to discuss, or I should say, the team has a chance to discuss each of the 363 students. That's pretty impressive. So my other updates while we log in is I'll just kind of jump down, if that's okay, before we get into budget. Capital project, some news. As you know, the project was approved. We're very excited because the project will be going out to bid as of this weekend. So actually, it will go out on the 18th of February, so that will allow, again, contractors and subcontractors to bid on that project. That's essentially about a month, one and a half process, and then at which point we'll review the bids and look at the best piece as for which, you know, person we award that bid. So again, that is exciting, so we are making steps in the right direction with the idea of still breaking ground in the spring. And as more information becomes available, we'll be bringing CSR's back to, of course, discuss, you know, the next steps of the project and kind of where we go. As you can imagine, of course, costs have fluctuated a little bit since the initial project, but of course, that's expected. But again, with the economy, of course, going out at a good time, they do say it's a great time to go out for bid. It will be interesting when those come back. So they projected bids could come back either, you know, higher than expect, or they could come back as high as 60% lower, they've certainly seen a different product. So it really does, 30% lower, I should say. So it really does kind of depend on that piece. But we'll get more information, of course, when we have something else to report, we'll bring back CSR's. Lockdown drills, I know Dr. Yodis will be covering some of these pieces when we get into the more localized print report. We did a lockdown drill yesterday, and that was very successful. That was our third lockdown drill of the year. We are now required to do four lockdown drills and eight fire drills instead of the old system of 12 fire drills. We did this one during middle school lunch, and that was a chance for us to kind of practice another scenario of what will we do if this happened during lunch. Typically, drills, as you know, they're forecasted, and so we kind of do them in the mornings or kind of in clean times. This is a chance to see what we do if we had 103 students in the cafeteria. That was actually very positive to see, we do actually, in that situation, we do move students to the kitchen, and that was very positive to see. Can we move 103 students into the kitchen and lock down the cafeteria in a short amount of time? And we were able to do that. And of course, each time we do the drill, we learn something new, allows us to test our locks and make sure that we're set. So that is, I guess, a positive thing that comes out of the new regulation, but that did just currently notify our families. And of course, the observation season's been very exciting. I reported out to the Board, but we are skating the spring. It is nice through our APPR process. Dr. Yodis completed an entire round of our staff doing their first round observations. It's my turn, so now basically I have the chance to go in each classroom and do a thorough observation, which is nice. So we were able to split that piece, and it is, once again, the beautiful part of being in a small district where you get the chance to actually interface with teachers and not simply just, you know, hear them, but actually see what's going on, have conversations of teaching and learning. So in the process of that, as you recall, that was a big thing last year going through that evaluation process, and I think now we're already in it and almost halfway through it. That's fantastic.
Yeah, with the lockdown drill, I got the report that my son was put into the pantry.
Couldn't believe that they could fit in the pantry, which was awesome. And there's that, but the cafeteria, that they all fit in the pantry. Didn't have to put anybody in the freezer.
So we could fit in all schools?
In the oven.
So thank you for allowing me to give you some updates, a little bit out of order as we load up here.
Sure.
So, as you recall, this is a pretty standard thing for schools to do at this time of year when we kind of do our preliminary budget report. And I'd like to kind of take you through what we know now, what the missing pieces are, and of course, where we'll be going with that. Of course, any questions you have, please ask, and then you can do your thing. So, the continuous problem that we look at, which is not uncommon, but actually a much easier thing said than done, is really, this is what we do constantly. It's basically to continue to provide a rich academic and instructional program that supports the mission statement and just follows, while maintaining a sustainable, and the key word being sustainable, good standing financial status. As you might recall, last year, when the district was kind of prematurely, I should say, inaccurately labeled a district that could have some fiscal stress, that did cause our community some, you know, malaise, you know, what's happening, why is our scores, I think, in the twenties? And obviously, there was an explanation for that. And this year, as you know, our score, our fiscal stress came down to, you know, single digits, which is a good thing. You want to be in a low score in that. Once again, so we look at, when we look at program, as much as it's always our goal to give as many opportunities for our students and provide as much as possible, the goal is not only to be financially solvent, but also sustainable. You know, can we put program in that we can keep doing? And as you've seen, schools that have got into, I should say, the 60s to 70s, the 80s of fiscal stress, 100 being like you're almost out of business, or you are out of business, those schools made the mistake of kind of either borrowing too much, or they made the mistake of perhaps adding programming, and then they're not able to maintain it. So they've added it because they had a chunk of revenue, but then they weren't able to look to the long term. Plus, our constant goal in the budget process is what are we doing and can we ensure it's going to hopefully be there, all things being, five, 10 years from now? Going with that, as much as this is something we've become very familiar with in our hallways, and it almost we become immune to in some ways, we also try to root everything back that we do to our mission statement, which again, of course, underscores the idea of personal and educational excellence, and of course, the description of what are we? We're a small, sort of a school district, rich with pride, and we, by working together, we can create a dynamic program. So once again, the idea of also being creative with our resources, not just physically, but also in a small environment, how do you provide a competitive program against a school that has the resources of just being larger? You know, how can you do with 363 students, K8, when some schools have an elementary school of 500 alone? So how do you do that, provide a competitive program to our students while maintaining that kind of small field, but also that's comparable, but not better than our neighboring districts as well? So that's something we're always thinking about as well. How do we embody that mission statement in the work that we do? And then, of course, our district goals, which again, something we've become used to seeing, and we try to lay everything back to what we do, but you'll see, I underline goal number five, because that's something that, of course, is always our challenge and continues to always be our focus. How do you provide a quality educational program while remaining fiscally responsible? Meaning, it's very easy to throw money into a problem, it's very easy to throw, you know, a program in place, but how do you do that by remaining fiscally responsible to the community at large? And as we know, the community is very responsible, responsive to us in watching kind of how we spend our resources and their tax dollars. So, what do we know as of tonight? And once again, you'll see me underscore the idea that everything is always subject to change. So at present moment, we can expect a total state aid increase for Wyandotte School of $21,620. So that's a total state aid increase foundation of $21,600. I did point out, and this would be something that you might have, if you've seen the preliminary runs that are done, of course, by various organizations, one at first might look, and if they did a quick search for Wyandotte School, they would see that we initially would appear as if we lost financially, state aid. What that was, was basically because our building project, as I mentioned last time, our last project we did, the aid on that 15-year cycle ended, we received less aid, but of course, our payment towards that project, that 15-year project, which we determined was the library, was this library, of course, the payment went down for that project. So as much, so that was kind of a wash. So in some ways, while the report, once again, that's why it's always important to dig a little bit deeper, showed like a negative 7% loss in aid, it really was a wash because our payment to that debt service reduced as well. So overall, in the end, when we watch, and Bell and I, of course, and Denise, really run this through state aid specialists, make sure that what we're looking at is accurate, this is our total state aid increase from last year to next year, or I should say, from this year to next year, is $21,620. Now, by applying the 0% tax levy law, which of course, as we know, there are, there's a lot of editorial out there, of course, of the clause and formula and kind of the misnomer in its naming, but by applying the formula, which is a very structured formula, that Bell basically uses an Excel piece, and we plug in numbers, you're basically, there's not much room to negotiate that, we plug in growth factors, you know, last year's levy, pieces that basically are last year's budget, pieces like that that are non-negotiables. And basically, what we come out to is that we can levy, so we can levy a max of, and these represent maxes, by the way, of $91,087. So once again, applying that 0% tax levy law, I'm sorry, that 2% tax levy law, I'm sorry, the 2% tax levy law, we can levy up to 1.8%, based on that formula, if that makes sense. So again, that should say, I'm sorry, 2% tax levy law, we can levy up to 1.8%, which is $91,087, more than last year. Now, we don't, we certainly, the district elected to levy 1.7. And again, the tax rate, of course, would vary depending on equalization rates and townships, but the district itself will levy a max of 1.8% or $91,000 or more. And once again, that's just that side note, that it doesn't necessarily equate to a tax increase of 1.8% to a township, that depends on equalization rates, sets of value, things like that. So that'd be Postonkill, Brunswick, and of course, the majority of our homes being in North Green Bush. So with that, as you might recall from last year, we were fortunate, again, thinking, of course, about the future, we had what's called a carryover levy, meaning at one point, that'd be about two years ago, Bell, we did not levy the full amount, the district elected not to levy the full amount, as they were able to meet their budgetary needs without levying the full amount. So basically, what the state allows you to do is carryover funds. So last year, we had a chunk of about $67,000 and change, the district elected to use half of that and carry that over into this year's levy. Now, it's a finite resource, meaning, so last year, we decided, you know, to close that gap. As you recall, you know, we had some gaps we needed to fill based on increased costs, which we'll talk about in a second. The district elected to use half that carryover and save half that carryover for another point. And at one point, the district investigated what happens if you don't use it, would it perhaps go away, was there a timeline on it? At this point, we don't believe it goes away, it doesn't even have to use it all this year, but certainly what's remaining in that carryover is $33,853. So again, last year, we used half of it, which was exactly $33,853. So we still have half that that we could levy as well on top of that. So we didn't use all of our nest eggs, if you will. But that would mean the approximate total tax levy increase would be 2.45%. So again, that's kind of the misleading part of a 2% tax cap, but really, the district under the formula, and once again, it is a prescribed formula, if the district said, let's use our entire carryover balance, which means we wouldn't have anything for next year, we could levy to, up to 2.45%. Or if you did less than that, the district said, let's use $18,000 of that, obviously the percentage would go down. But that would be the max levy that the district could implement. And of course, again, what that would be in tax rates would again vary by township. Does that make sense so far? That is very confusing, because again, that's where that 2% tax cap is kind of misleading, but again, it is a formula that, depending on where you stand, as you know, last year, the district, based on the formula, was allowed to levy up to 0.79. This year, it worked out to be 1.8, and that was basically due to moderate taxable growth increase. So our rate was 1.0053, I believe, so that 5.3 in the thousands and 10,000's place made a difference in obviously allowing us to levy more. So even though we haven't had major growth, you know, a major housing development come in or come provision, it's been enough growth to kind of kick us up into that a little bit more mess. So, with that, we have a total guaranteed revenue increase from last year's budget to this year's budget would be $112,707 without the carryover. So basically, I assume, just remember, this is all theoretical pieces at this point, if you didn't use the carryover, could you, the district could levy, so that's the $91,000 plus the $21,000 and change increase in state aid, the district's guaranteed revenue would be $112,707. Obviously, if the district carried over $33,853, the district would have upwards of 1, you know, 143,000 and change or a little bit more than that if they use the entire amount or any amount less than that, if that makes sense. So again, 112 would be the minimum, and obviously, the upper end would be the entire carryover balance plus the 112. And of course, all subject to change. So, more money is great, but as you can imagine, there are some fixed costs that we have, and of course, that are challenged every school district, regardless of size, ours is sort of more proportional. So contractual salary increases are mandatory. So once again, as you know, they are negotiated items, so they are mandatory pieces. So the combined mandatory pay increase for the Teachers Union WTA, which is our, again, one of our two bargaining units, is $137,000. So again, that's without health insurance, dental, that's employee, I'm sorry, retirement contributions that we pay, and step increases that go with just everybody that's here moving up that negotiated item. So that would be just in increase in pay alone, and again, that's for the entire faculty, but obviously, it adds up to $137,000 approximately. The WTA aid, the AIDS Association contract is being negotiated, expires this year, so we're actually about to enter negotiations, but that expires this year. So I was not able to put that figure in because it would, once again, would be up to what the unit and the district come to an agreement with, and they have just, I believe, in that process today of meeting with each other. And again, that does not include, so again, something that the districts should take into consideration is that does not include the non-unionized 10, 12-month employees. So again, bus drivers, custodians, cafeterias, secretaries, administration, in many districts, those are unionized employees where the raise is predictable, at least you can look at that piece. These are year-to-year contracts that are signed, so there's not a guaranteed raise. Obviously, it's something that we value as employees, but it's not built into their contracts. There's not a guaranteed raise, but that number doesn't include any increase in pay for any of those units. Once again, those figures just refer to straight cash. The health, dental, insurance coverage rates increases are estimated at about 6% overall. So basically, our cost last year to insure everyone health-wise and dental-wise, about 6% overall. So that's not bad, but of course, it's obviously an increase that does affect us, predicted, once again, estimated. Do we hope it comes in lower? Absolutely. Could it come in a little bit higher? Absolutely. So we're still waiting on final numbers, so as you can see, this is kind of a shell game as we make predictions. But with that is the other piece, that's health and dental. Now, prescription drug coverage, last year's increase was approximately 23%. Now, that wasn't Wyandotte School exclusively, that was kind of trending nationally, the increase in prescription drug costs were about 23%. This year's figures are not available because there's been some issues, of course, with transitioning over to a different prescription drug carrier, so we're still waiting for those numbers now. Certainly, do we hope that that number is lower or the same? That'd be great, but of course, if we budget, we always want to budget for the idea that it could be higher. Because once again, if those rates were to come out in May, you want to make sure that you had something, you know, ready to make those costs. So again, last year was about 23%, that was trending. So, now, last year's health insurance went down about 2%, but prescription drug went up 23%. So once again, kind of a misnomer of, oh, healthcare's going down. Well, healthcare went down, prescription costs went up. Obviously, that was kind of, again, a national thing. Other things to consider, special education placements, and again, some of these bullets might look familiar from last year, but this is just kind of a lay of land. Obviously, each outplacement, so students that are no longer, if they're not placed in district because we cannot meet their need, is about $60,000, and that's important to budget for, because of their unanticipated arrival. So once again, we have students that when we project, we budget for, but of course, being a smaller district that has limited programming based on our size, we always want to have a cushion of what if we had somebody move into our district, as we did last year, that is immediately placed in an outplacement, okay? Has services provided through Quest R3 or through, you know, Wildwood, so to speak, that is a cost that runs about that, but of course, we have to be prepared for that because that is a service that we need to provide.
How many people do you budget for? Just one or two?
We typically budget for one, one carry, one new student. So our current students, then we budget for one. And of course, sometimes that is used, and then of course, that's the hope, because if it's not used, we're able to, you know, carry that over. But obviously, we don't go with one, but if two came, we'd have to just reallocate resources. Great question. Charter school tuition and GE High School tuition changes daily, so it's interesting. Now, charter school tuition, as you know, children have the right to, any child in the district has the right to attend a charter school. I believe it's within a 15-mile radius of the public school, so again, that does do the Troy Prep. So basically, that's been a choice, I shouldn't say a choice, it would actually probably encompass the Albany charter schools as well. So we did have, for example, last year, two students that moved to the district, never set foot in the district, and said, you know, I'd like, they'd like to continue their schooling at Troy Prep. So of course, that's something we cannot deny, but we had a budget for that, and then we pay our tuition to Troy Prep. So again, that's something we have to account for. We account for our general tuition line item because it's not something we can decline. So again, that's something that we have to watch. Now, certainly, those students actually want to return to the district, coming back to us, but it could change tomorrow. So once again, it's something we just like to keep in our heads, we don't want to be, you know, too glum about it, but of course, we want to make sure we are set for that, because it did happen, it was last year, and we're actually prepared for that. Also, GE high school tuition, as you know, our students have the choice of five high schools, Tech Valley High School, Brittonkill, April Park, East Green Bush, and Troy. We have negotiated rates with those schools, so of course, we know the rates, which has been something very positive for us. We used to just use the state rates, which meant we would budget and then hope the state rate came in lower than what we had, because if it came in higher, the state rate comes at the end of the year, then you didn't know where you're going to be. So we've been lucky to negotiate with our neighboring districts' rates, set rates, that, so that we know what to budget for. However, as you know, our students do have the choice, so we might budget for, and also have the, the choice at this point, to transition schools. So for example, we've had students that start perhaps at Troy High School, and then perhaps their junior year decide that it's not the right fit, and they want to transition to Brittonkill, and that is obviously a higher tuition rate, probably by about eight thousand dollars. So again, with that one student, maybe perhaps cost twenty-nine hundred at Troy, is now eleven thousand and change, and they have the right to make that transition. Also, we account for students that do move into our district that are ninth through twelfth graders. We might never see them, but obviously, it's our duty to educate them to high school, so we just have to keep that in mind as well. So again, these are just things that we do behind the scenes that aren't as glamorous, but obviously, we account for students that move in as eleventh graders, and suddenly, there's a tuition bill of eleven thousand dollars, that we have to make sure that we can make, to send that student on to high school. And of course, the determination of our eighth grade class high school choice, that's something that we use. Obviously, our current eighth grade is in the process of doing, I mean, their high school visitation day is coming up, it'll be March second. And so we've used some kind of shell data of, you know, or actually, straw poll data where they're going to be. What we do is that we budget for, and actually, I got to credit Belle for this one, of kind of taking an average of the tuitions and budgeting each of our students to attend an average of those tuitions, meaning, the idea being, some will attend, so Belle, that was a fantastic idea.
Thank you.
If it's a good one, and you know.
If it's good, I'll take credit.
Let's see how it looks, it'll be good. So actually, that's the way it's using now.
That's right.
If it fails, I'll take it. So that's something we're using now, because again, high school ultimate choice, I believe, isn't due until...
March thirteenth?
March thirteenth. So right now, and again, that, of course, could change, because we have students that, you know, April might say, you know what, I decided, I, I really think I want to attend April Park instead of East Green Bush, but we use that as kind of a balanced number, so that, again, we're, we're safe, because theoretically, each of our students chose Brittonkill, which again, is our highest tuition right now, we have to be prepared for that. So again, they could theoretically, but we just want to make sure that we're set. And of course, the reason I highlight those is that they're basically what we call non-social schools, meaning, not something that we could say, well, can't we just cut tuition and add to back into the K general program? Or can't we just assume that the charter school students are back, they, they moved back into the district, they, they sent that student here, can't we just eliminate that, that allocation, put that back into supply? Well, you could, but then, if that student shows up on your doorstep that, that is entitled and requires a level of education, then it's coming from someplace else, then we're not being sustained, same with our special ed placements as well. Also, now, this is not something you would bond for or budget for, but part of our piece too, of being fiscally responsible, is, as you know, each year, we try to replace two new buses, or sorry, phase out two vehicles, and bring two new vehicles into the fleet, which again, being on that two per year cycle, has been very positive, as you might have seen in some districts, now again, this might be quarter to scale, you hate to be in a position where you don't replace your fleet, and then suddenly, you're replacing seven or eight buses at one time. So again, as much as we do preventive maintenance, things like that, we look at, you know, what are our two vehicles that kind of should be going off the road, the expenses are more than they're worth, more than it's worth, and then, of course, the goal is to add to in. We are due for one twenty-seven passenger bus with wheelchair access, our current wheelchair access vehicle is probably, you know, near the end of its lifespan, so it'd be, that would be our goal with leftover funds from this year, to use that, and one sixty-six passenger. So again, it is debatable, as you know, but it's no extra cost to district, but will of course be part of the overall budget consideration. So again, it's not something we budget for, but that does depend on, of course, what we spend by the end of the year. We use money that's left over in this year's budget, which of course, is if we're planning well, we can do that. So last year, we were able to purchase two new buses, because we spent very wisely. If we overspend, we might be in a spot saying, you know, we can only afford one bus, or maybe this year we can't, and then we're now in a spot where we're either borrowing for buses, or we're buying four or five at a time. And so it's nice not to be in that, if that's the case. So program priority that we want to address, of course, so this kind of goes with our figures, okay, is, okay, in addition to maintaining our current levels of programs, the idea, of course, is not to always be looking at, at school budgets as ways of making cuts, but the district would like to consider the following needs. So of course, a lot of you are going to see the word maintain come up a lot, because this has been something I think we've been very proud of, maintain the current supplemental resources to support larger second grade, next year's third grade class. So again, as you know, for our current second grade students, while we anticipated a larger class size this year, due to, again, we took in revenue from Little Red, but we had eleven students go from first grade, Little Red, to second grade. So to support that, we added a teaching assistant, we also allocated, again, significant remedial staff support to that classroom as well. So again, that, that does have a cost of that, our goal is to transition that up to the third grade class. As you saw from Stephanie's data point piece, as you can see, I do believe as much as that class size is quote-unquote "larger," now, larger is relative, because of course, we have classes running of twenty-four, twenty-five, and we have one class of second grade of twenty-seven, so it does become that, that classic discussion of what is large. But as you saw by the slide from Stephanie's data point piece, one of our largest growth areas was in second grade, so actually, kind of impressive, so if we look at the data, if we're using data to make a supportive decision, one of the classes, our cohorts that had the largest growth was the second grade class. So again, as you can see, data can go either way, but that is something that we do look at, is the intervention we're doing, working, and I would say that this model is at this point working, again, all things being subject to change, but of course, that does have a cost of that. Maintenance of support for K staff fresh development, one of the pieces that we talked about as PD, we want to have allocation to send our staff to conferences, resources, bring people in if we need that, so that staff continue to grow and of course, improve their instructional pedagogy. With that is special education program delivery. So outside of those kind of more extreme cases I presented, such as outplacements, is our program delivery. So again, services for seventeen, eighteen being determined over the next two months, meaning, what are the students that are in this building, K eight, what do they need? And of course, are we prepared to provide that? Okay, so does that require an increase in support, a decrease or reallocation of support, but to make sure that we are ready for that, and of course, giving our students what they need? Maintain appropriate textbook allocation to meet the needs of math and the other areas, besides the series that we use, you know, we want classroom libraries to be flush, we never want to be in a spot to say, well, teacher, you can't, you do not have money to buy books. So again, that requires obviously, allocation of resources. Maintenance of technology support and resources for instructional program, devices in the ever-increasing infrastructure. So once again, one of these has been very fortunate by some, obviously, carryover funds or some leftover funds, but also is that we've been able to get pretty close, and I won't put Mr. Lutz on the spot, but pretty close in, you know, grades two, three, to being almost one to one. You know, while the students do not take the devices home, pretty much access to laptops, computer labs, equipment is pretty solid, and of course, we're hoping to continue that down in K one and two, to have that there. But of course, that requires maintenance, and of course, replacing equipment as much, but we want to maintain that. One of the worst mistakes schools make with technology is make one big purchase one year, they wait three or four years, and they don't upgrade the network, the infrastructure, and then suddenly, the devices are useless, and it's, it's, you can't catch up, similar to the buses. And also, one of the pieces that's a little bit unique this year is, we'd like to look at the examination of our part-time librarian position. So basically, Linda Ficuri, as you know, is our point six librarian, does a fantastic job, has a lot of K eight collaboration, but again, has always been a, a part-time piece. Again, she teaches a library special to our K six students, but she does do a tremendous amount of work within our building, and of course, when we look at literacy, and what raises literacy, and what raises our reading levels, it's that collaboration piece. So again, to look at, is there a way to maybe increase the role of the librarian, so it's not just simply providing a special, but also working with staff, you know, being able to work with staff outside of, you know, the instructor, the three-period days, looking at a way to maybe increase that, if money allowed, and was sustainable, so that that person could maybe perhaps push into, you know, a seventh grade class to assist with a project. Many libraries, as you know, have a librarian that is available outside of their class, and they're not just coming in to teach their classes, they're available for research products that the library can be used, can be accessed, it's not like the library just opens and closes. That's something that I think was done in the past, but something to maybe look at, because it is kind of a piece that I would say is commissive, you know, we have a library that is accessible, but basically, is only staffed by a librarian from the hours of, you know, ten to one. So is there maybe areas to look at, maybe increasing that to some increment, and whatever degree that would be, of course, we determine. And of course, minimal disruption to the fund balance to keep us in solid fiscal standing. So again, as you know, I mentioned that figure in the beginning of that fiscal stress, not disrupting our fund balance, which is not just borrowing, but also, each year, we make a contribution to that fund balance, which is a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars that we budget to be added back into our fund balance. So we don't want to get in a spot where we're not adding and maintaining our fund balance, as much as we, we spend it and we use it, we want, never want to get to a spot where we'll just put in three percent this year, or, you know, we'll just throw in a hundred thousand dollars, and we're back in a very dangerous spot of kind of not replenishing our fund balance and keeping it at the maximum of four percent. And of course, the capital product reserve fund, as you know, we're breaking ground soon, though we were approved for a five-point-one million dollar bond, what placed the district in a great financial situation last time was, in, at the end of the project, the district was able to pay off a significant amount of that debt without borrowing. So the less we have to borrow, the less we have to pay back over a fifteen, twenty-year period, which means that in fifteen to twenty years, the district can benefit from that, that, that saving piece. Again, if we defeat our capital product reserve, or we're not putting money towards that, it will mean that we're borrowing more, which means we're expensing more when it's time to pay back that product. As much as debatable, it's not fully debatable, so of course, we do have an expense to that. So again, just thinking ahead of those things. And of course, pre-K coming soon. Now, while it's not opening for the seventeen, eighteen school year, the anticipations that it will open for the eighteen, nineteen school year, the pre-K committee did meet last month for our kind of initial meeting, but that piece is key, is, you know, will the district be ready? And of course, the answer is yes, but that will require some resource allocation of how do we ensure we have the resources to add two new classrooms with support, staffing for everything from, you know, lunches to bussing, things like that, that will have a cost, in essence, we're adding two new sections when we add a pre-K program. Now, how we deliver that is to be determined, but obviously, there will be a cost regardless of the increment of that, and that's something that we just want to be prepared to add, because that's going to be, need to be sustainable. So balance line is balance revenues with mandatory and desired program expenses in a viable school budget. But of course, there's hope, there's some key missing pieces here. So again, this is not to be do and bloom, it's just to be, give us a real missing piece here. Obviously, you might have seen in the paper this week, there's been some legislative action of looking at revising either an increase in foundation aid, at least what's projected, or revision of the tax cap formula. Now, as you saw, the formula's a little bit broken, because it's a two percent cap, but you could levy up to two point four seven in this case, but there is some talk in looking at that formula, that was Senator Marsh, you know, I put that out there a couple weeks ago, now you're seeing some conversations with legislative and executive branches. Also, tuition revenue, the goal is always that our gain is greater than loss. So again, our Little Red tuition from the North Green Bush Common Schools that we take in, you know, we do make revenue on that, of course, revenue through using our buses to provide transportation to Little Red, that's revenue, that's money that's coming in. So our goal is obviously that our gain, meaning the students that, that attend us from the Little Red Schoolhouse, and then of course, the North Green Bush School, is greater than our loss. As you know, our eighth graders that graduate that are in the Little Red School District, we lose that tuition piece, we pick up new students coming in that, you know, start with second grade on up. So again, the goal being that we might lose the, the tuition coming in from North Green Bush of our eighth graders that are now going on to high school, and that bill will of course now be North Green Bush's responsibility, but can we make our tuition revenue greater? So that, again, that is a benefit to us, if that's greater, that changes the whole bunch of picture. And of course, this is some piece here, the successful administrative restructure over the past few years, as you know, we've looked at, and that's something we've been very proud of, is the business consultant position that is, is a two years ago, the data management position, if I may put out there, to be blunt, that number that was projected before would be, would be higher, if you still had those two full-time people working in, in that kind of role. So again, the reallocation of the doing more with less, you know, again, the same number of FTEs, so to speak, but obviously, you know, eliminating benefits, and of course, those pieces has been a pretty big savings to us. Obviously, those numbers would be higher, and again, that's something that we have to budget for, because again, those are, those are open your door expenses. So next steps, okay, use available data to ensure that needs and fixed costs are met. So once again, that goes back to everything from health insurance to prescription drug costs, ensuring that when we get that hard data, that we've actually made a successful prediction. Reexamination of last year's line items to make sure that we were appropriate, so meaning, last year, we determined, for example, valid numbers were in the spot, but fuel, we had allocated a pretty significant amount of fuel, with fuel prices being much lower than we thought, we were able to kind of bring that down to a more reasonable number, which of course, returned, you know, revenue, or I should say, income back into other funds. So basically, you know, for example, last year, I think we budgeted in the eighty, eighty thousand dollar range, and we spent about thirty?
Yeah.
You know, so that was a big deal, so that, that, you know, that was money that was able to restore back into the regular general fund, so obviously, this year, we budgeted, I think, in the fifties or sixties, hoping that maybe, you know, we can project that for next year as well, if fuel prices continue. So again, making sure that our line items are accurate, okay, if one's too high, one's too low. And of course, using enrollment data to examine the financials after the open door expenses, to ensure class sizes are adequately but responsibly addressed, meaning, short-term versus long-term. And I only throw that on there, because it's so easy to say, oh, it'd be great, we just need another teacher, if only there was another teacher, and that's fantastic, and certainly, the district would never want to decline the opportunity to add instructional support, but the key is, can we maintain it? Adding a full-time person with benefits and insurance, of course, can run upwards of sixty-five, seventy thousand dollars, that's fantastic, but can the district maintain that as that person follows through? We hate to add a service and remove it the following year, just because of... So number four is key, be patient, ask and answer questions, and advocate, and of course, think outside the box. And I throw that out there, but on a positive note, as much as that looks very like, oh my god, there's this big gap, that's also a result of us, besides those pieces that are solids, I mean, those are things that are not negotiable, raises, health insurance increases, increases are just our natural part of living. You know, Belle and I also work very closely, probably, I'd say, I hope I'll enjoy, but at least each day, spending some point of really estimating, but also estimating on the high side, because meaning, right now, if we were to roll out and show you our predictions for next year, they would be, hopefully, on the high side, meaning, what we predicted and what we allocated for health insurance, what we allocated for prescription drugs, with the idea that when real rates come in, we say, okay, that's great, wow, that was, we were ten thousand dollars over the line, okay, good, that gap is slower and slow and slower, and perhaps there's that revenue piece, perhaps there's that point where the scale tips, and we say, wow, okay, we're now twenty thousand dollars ahead, and now we can look at some of those other pieces of restoring needed money into one of those kind of private areas. So again, a very early snapshot, many to be determined, but I will say, I think we're ahead of the game, because we have a lot of soft numbers in place, we're just kind of waiting for the next steps of others to kind of put into our, and again, an increase in foundation aid of thirty thousand dollars changes that whole picture to us, as you can imagine. But again, we're ready for that, and of course, like last year, we'll keep you updated, but of course, any questions you got between now and then, feel free to ask, or anything of now, I'd love to answer.
Looks good, thank you.
I like the increase in the librarian, I know, virgibly, because this library...
Yes. I was very interested in that.
She still comes and visits, this is Ficura, but I just think it would be nice to see the librarian still go into those second and eighth grade rooms, because they need see the library and still go into those steps in eighth grade rooms because they need to learn how to do research papers and, you know, kind of thing, so that's cool.
I'm not sure if Steve comes up with more money.
Absolutely, yes.
I know, I've been following the commissioner and she's been testifying at the hearings and pushing for more foundation aid and it just isn't enough to keep schools going.
Exactly.
I don't know what they expect.
You might recall last year, the big piece was GEA, that was a big, big hot topic. So of course, we benefited from a pretty, you know, $100 and something thousand dollars, $164 I believe, of GEA, which was fantastic, because suddenly, that's a great, oh wow, it was restored and brought that back in, but that was a one-shot restoration. So now we don't have that restoration. It's built into the base, but it's not, we're out of kind of eggs, so it'd be great to see that foundation piece look at. Or the tax cap formally revisit to make it a little more equitable, give maybe a little more freedom for districts to look at, you know, what they need to... Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 2.3, good report.
As far as what we've been doing academically, as Stephanie Cartbone has said, really was testing through last month and getting all that done, and I want to say kudos to Stephanie for running a very successful NWEA. That is so, such an overwhelming task, especially because this is new and to say the least, you just did an amazing job in that we can get 360 kids tested in ELAMath, the computer's working, and get it all done within a few shorter weeks when we got back from grade was outstanding. And we gave her a deadline. By February 1st, I wanted to have the data team to schedule that, and she was crunching, crunching, because when the kids are out, they have to do the makeup test.
No way.
Yeah.
And a lot of kids were sick.
Yeah, and there was a lot, so God love her. She made the deadline on the February 1st. And second, we had data review meetings and we spent a little bit longer, we usually try to get it done in one day, but bringing teachers in and talking about their whole class in, you know, 20 minutes, a half hour, so we increased that and went two days to really give them the time to say, it's a half point in a year, tell us about what you're seeing in the classroom with every single student, you know, and to run 360-plus kids through and really talk about their strengths and weaknesses. And, you know, as Stephanie said, weed out who doesn't need a help anymore and who we could add, and then teachers are talking about, well, how does that change the groups in the classroom and what do we do for instructional pieces? So we had a very successful two days, but again, without all that hard work, it would never have happened. So, kudos to Stephanie, Kim Herselbach for putting all that data together, so that teachers came in. And this year, we did something like this, and displayed the data kid by kid on the screen in the room and just, everything was right there and had great discussion. So, all the behind the scenes helped really make it a very successful data team. Yeah, so to say that two quarters are over is insane. You know, we're already starting to look at planning for next year, and I'm like, wait a minute, what happened? So we've been, you know, busy really taking steps to look at where we're going the rest of the year. And Stephanie Cartbone also, another thanks, yesterday, we had a faculty meeting where Stephanie ran the meeting and showed more of the NWEA reports that can be raised, and one of the reports that she happened, and this is all being self-taught, she found a really nice report that will look at not only how our children are doing and our lowest children, but how are our high students coming in? And so is our highest student making the, you know, the growth that they should be making too? And if they're not, you know, what can we do so that we're differentiating and challenging and enriching those students too? So, the charts and graphs that she really sat down, explained to the teachers, I think were very powerful, and not just looking at, okay, these guys are low, what are we doing for them? It's really like, well, wait a minute, there are some high students who only made little growth, and so why aren't our highest students making just as much growth as we would expect from our lowest students? So, I think that really has potential to really change the culture here and to look at those pieces specifically and enrich our students who came in high and need that attention. So thank you for running that faculty meeting. We had a couple options yesterday, that was the faculty meeting earlier, and then some of us, we took a trip, 10 teachers went to the aquarium in Schenectady that just opened up. We had a wonderful time, a lot of hands-on, touching stingrays and fish and looking at sharks, and so, you know, we took a little field trip over there and really looking at how we could bring perhaps, you know, our students over incorporating this into what we do here in our science program. And so it really was nice, we think it'd be a great field trip. You know, Mrs. Zupick loves field trips and raising money for field trips. So at $8 a child, we thought that could be very, a great field trip. So we had a lot of fun with that yesterday as part two of the faculty meeting. Yesterday, as Dr. Riordan said, the safety drill went very smoothly, adding that at lunch was a nice touch. Last week, we completed, I don't know if you saw some of the postings or if your children told you, we took place in the Start With Hello Week from Sandy Hook. And really, what we did, grades two through eight, is really trying to promote, you know, discouraging, you know, getting rid of any kind of social isolation and really getting kids to really go out of their comfort zone, to mix it up, sit at the lunchroom. It went beautifully. Middle school was a challenge, I'll tell you. At 1 o'clock, I was in a deep sweat every day. I didn't know it would be this difficult. And I think, you know, our blessing is that we're small and then our curse is that we're small. So trying to, you know, there's only a small group, but trying to get them to sit at different lunch tables, I didn't know it would be so exhausting. And I was mentally drained, and every night I'd come home and I am saying to my husband, I cannot believe how draining that is. You know, I felt like you just had to, you know, try to run a circus and entertain them. So the first day didn't go as smooth for the middle school as I thought it would. I mean, they were like kicking and screaming. And we just did random draw, we mixed up sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. You know, for me, it breaks my heart to go in and see someone eating alone. There's no reason in this school district that someone eats alone in the lunchroom. Or when a parent says to me, you know, my child hates going to lunch, like, that just cannot happen here. And we have the power to not have that happen here, you know, we can monitor that. And so this year, I've been trying to really go into that lunchroom and bring some days up room twister and board games, and we do, you know, crazy things, and we tried adding, you know, that recess period to go to the gym, but then what you still see is like little cliques doing those activities and there's still those outliers. And so when Sandy Hook was doing this, we thought, you know, another great way to come together to really eliminate anyone eating alone or just participating alone. So, we spent all week doing it, by Friday, I think it was amazing. So as I said, the middle school, the first couple of days, because it was random draw, I mean, they were like, we are not sitting with these kids, we don't, you know, some of them, some of them are good. So then day two, I said, well, I'll have to mix it up a little differently, and then we tried just mixing up within six, within seven, and within eight. And then trying to do, I brought the Legos and we did, you know, team building. So, you know, you have to together, create a structure together, you have 20 minutes, and it was a competition. And then they had to rotate the next day and write songs about, you know, being kinder and including every student here. And by the end of the week, we had a great celebration, they created amazing things, and we were one of 3,000 schools across, you know, the United States who took place and took part in this. And so we kept tweeting and they got a kick out of it, we brought the equipment in the cafeteria so they could see our tweets, their pictures that would go up to the Sandy Hook site and three, you know, it was actually 30,000 followers to that site, then everybody was retweeting all these pictures. So then they thought it was the coolest thing ever. And for the little guys, you know, again, they just loved it. So, you know, my goal is that it wasn't just a week, we celebrated it, but you know, our message is, you know, we have to do more of this, we have to make everybody feel comfortable, and it's not okay just for one child to feel out of place, especially in such a small school. So, that was a lot of fun, a lot of exhaustion, but a lot of fun.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Do you think it would be better to start earlier in the year before the groups kind of establish?
I think starting young, I can't, I mean, I literally was in that cafeteria almost crying every day to see the little guys. I mean, I, my heart was just how well they took this. And so starting younger, second, third, fourth, they couldn't wait, who am I sitting with today? And so the first day to kind of break the ice, we had, you know, little sheets and everybody took a piece of paper and a crayon or pencil, and it was ask what, how many pets do you have, how many siblings, just to kind of break the awkwardness. But the little guys got so interested, and then I would walk around and they'd say, I can't believe, I've known so-and-so for so long and I didn't know that she had a cat or, you know, whatever it was, they were so excited. So just seeing how that took off, I think it is certainly starting things like that on a regular basis, but starting them young. Again, for sixth, seventh, eighth, it was like a culture shock. It was a culture shock for some of them to talk, I just, I couldn't believe it, because we are so small, thinking we've been together for so long, with, you know, why is this so awkward? But it was, so definitely lessons learned for me, you know, we need to start that, we need to do it, you know, I hope we can do this once, at least once a month, this kind of... But again, with the team building, once I could figure out that, okay, if I could get the motivation, then the awkwardness wouldn't be...
Do you think like starting it like from the beginning of the school year before they formed those little groups? Do you see that helping at all?
Yeah, I think it certainly can, and I think there's that awareness, and, you know, the first thing we did, before we did this this week, the week prior, we, Amy Murphy, instead of doing her second step lessons, we really put the spin on this. We got a little more in-depth with the older kids, we had an assembly, Amy and I, and, you know, I just said to the kids, how many kids, do you think there's any kids here that sit at Gardner Dickinson by themselves? Yeah, we do. And they were very honest, they're like, yeah. I said, do you ever think, you know, can you believe it here, Gardner Dickinson, do you think somebody dreads going to the lunchroom? Yeah. And, you know, so they were honest about it. And then we talked about that, you know, that, you know, when kids feel isolated for several years, no matter where they are, you know, there's always that chance that they could hurt themselves or hurt others. That's kind of how we left it, but we didn't say that to the second, third, fourth, you know, we kind of did it like, hey, let's just try to make friends. But with the middle school, we tried to say, like, you don't know how bad somebody's hurting inside because they are sitting there, because they dread sitting by themselves. So, they took it, I thought, very seriously, and, but again, when push came to shove, it was uncomfortable for them to do this. But some kids, again, they pushed through it and they, I think they had a great time. And by the end, there was a celebration, they were singing some of the raps that they wrote, songs, and they were all about, you know, we're a small school, there's no reason that somebody sits alone. I mean, they were very serious and they had fun with it. So, you know, again, I think starting younger and doing it more often and breaking it up.
How was it?
That's what I was just gonna ask. Well, it's interesting.
All the back in the room groups?
And I think this was good too for the teachers to think, so I know in several classrooms I'll go in and they're talking about, instead of saying, pick your partner and go, you know, get into a partner and do this math sheet, they're picking partners and saying, or they're saying, sit with someone that you don't typically sit with and do this ELA assignment. So the teachers say that they're going to continue this, you know, through the educational piece and through the academic piece, so I think that will be good. Some of the younger guys are still, hey, Mrs. Jones, look at who I'm sitting with, I don't really know her. And they're like, just so proud to tell me as I'm walking down the hall, like, I said it was her today, you know, and I... So that was really good. The older guys, you know, I'm not seeing it so much, but some of the things like the episodio in the morning for intermarials is still demanding that, that we're going to do a little team building today, you know, we're going to do different things. So I think being fresh in the teacher's mind, can we create opportunities? Absolutely. That's more, instead of like, okay, once a week, we're in culture, you know, once a year, we're going to do this. So I think they're trying to do those things in the classroom, and I think it brings awareness to the teachers, you know? There are still some outlier kids who don't feel comfortable in here. And when I told the teachers I was going to run this program, they immediately would send me a list like, so-and-so, and so-and-so never sat with anybody, and I'm like, yeah, I see that, you know, I know that's, you know, but that, if we know that, we could, you know, rifle all of those names, you know, why aren't we doing something? So this to me was like an excuse to do what we should have been doing, really making a big celebration of it, not just, okay, you know, crazy, Mrs. Jones wants us to do this, hey, look at, this is all over the country, this is across the country, 3,000 other schools are doing it, do you want to do it? Yeah, let's do it.
I love the concept, I love that whole, start with a little concept.
Just being kind and just watching the kids. I mean, it really was, it was, it was so worth it, but really, the hope is that we'll just continue doing this on a regular basis and doing, you know, different outings and different things to promote this, so it was good. Jump rope for Heart, which is very successful, they said it was down a little, but still lots of fun, still quite a few, I think she said over 60 children, again, just a great fundraiser, and to have it to be a snow day and to reschedule, and at least we got it in, and it's wonderful. We took 50 middle schoolers ice skating today as part of a quarter for the SWAG award, and that was a lot of fun, and I was just completely thrilled that probably 90% of the kids did not know how to ice skate. So apparently, they probably watch too much TV in the winter time, they don't get out this much, but that was a, you know, a fun event.
Did you ice skate?
I did.
Okay.
I did. Well, not as good as your daughter did, flipping around and, but yeah, I ice skated, and Dr. Riordan did it as well. He did great, he did great. Oh, that's fun.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
2.4, PTO update. Are there anything, Sue?
Just a few things, it's a kind of our lull this time of the year, but we are, we have just rolled out our spring fundraiser, which is Prouse's Candy. So if anybody's interested, I know Kathy's got some order forms in the front office, I think they're going to be due beginning of March, like March 3rd or something, but we seem to be doing increasingly better on that every year, and so I'm hoping for a big return there. And we're also planning for our upcoming book fair, which is at the end of March, third week of March. Mrs. Pacura is doing a community, incorporating a community aspect, which is something new, we've never done this this year, and she is rocking it out with her ideas. She is having a book talk, which will fill in as our park night, and park night, every year, we have an evening where parents are reading purposes through the month of March. And every year during the book fair, we have an evening event, and we have different things happening each year. And this year, it's going to be the, a book talk the night before about I Am the Lala. So we are promoting that right now, that the books are available, and it's just going to have a panel here on the 21st, including a couple of guest speakers, and I'm not quite sure of the significance of the guest speaker, the college professor or visiting professor at Sage, I'm not sure of the other, but, and I don't, and they're Middle Eastern, I don't know if they're African or like...
Yep, from Afghan, San San came to our country for the education.
Yeah, amazing. So completely ties in with the books, so they're going to be here talking about the books, so the books are going to be available for other, and other community members are welcome to join. We hope that parents of older children invite some of their maybe middle school students or children with them as well to get them involved. And so it's really neat, something very different, and she's doing a great job. In addition to that, I have met with a local community member, which also sort of ties into the community angle too, who's interested in raising funds for children in El Salvador. And this woman runs Moxie's Ice Cream, name is Pam. Pam approached Dr. Riordan recently because she wanted to hold a book fair for profits because she lives here and runs Moxie's half the year, and then the other half the year lives in El Salvador. And in El Salvador, she's trying, she's running a literacy program, and she doesn't really try and to get more books. So she went to, approached Scholastic, Scholastic told her to approach her neighboring school district, therefore, that would be us. So we're looking up, and there are certain ways that we can kind of raise funds through Scholastic, which we've done in the past, but we're looking to really beat that up and promote it. And one of those ways is like, if you buy a book, you can round out to the nearest dollar and donate all of that leftover change to Pam's fund. So we, I met with her briefly, and she's going to put together some information, and we're going to promote it, and hopefully, we'll be able to supply her with some money to buy some books for her literacy program in El Salvador. So it's neat, that's kind of exciting. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. At our last PTO meeting, we only have three year now, in January, we were talking about the possibility of Kyle Beliksky, who's a member, who's the president of, I don't even know her position, I'm going to say it wrong, so I'm not even going to say it. She, she's part of the PTA, obviously, we're a PTO, we are going to invite a guest speaker to come here in a small little forum, informal type of situation, for her to give people, particular members, the idea of what the importance is and what are the benefits of becoming a PTA over a PTO. And I guess a lot of it has to do with money, grants, possibilities of obtaining those as a PTA. So we are going to possibly, we'll look into that option of possibly becoming a PTA if it was to our advantage. Yeah, so we're going to set something up after the break.
And the SEPTA has, is moving forward?
Yes, SEPTA is moving forward, and we are yet to, still kind of start, we missed out on having SEPTA representatives here to talk about that PTA meeting, and I was unable to come to your forum that you had, but I knew a lot of people came, and do you want to talk a little bit about that?
I can, yes. So SEPTA is a special ed PTA, and we voted at the last forum to move forward to try to become a charter, so we need 25 members to, you know, to pay the dues to become, you know, the membership. So right now, we have a nominating committee, because we have to have president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer, and we have to have bylaws, but apparently, there's a easy like tutorial that'll whiz us through the bylaws, so we have a bylaws committee and a nominating committee. But basically, the special ed PTA, you know, is to help support special ed parents and students ages three to 21, because that is the special ed age. And we're really looking to keep those connections through high school and preschool, you know, for people who need, need support, need answers, you know, want to come to a meeting, and then also looking at our events and how we can make them a little more sensory friendly, and we're hosting, you know, kind of our own events to, you know, for more peer modeling, for more peer interaction, you know, to make, you know, events meaningful for kids with special needs. So it's kind of has a dual purpose, parental support, and we'll just see where it goes, you know, who knows, you know...
And you don't first say fundraiser, you just really sponsor?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we don't plan on being a fundraising entity at all, except if we have to raise money, you know, to pay the insurance or, you know, whatever, minimal supplies that we need. Our hope is, you know, that through the dues, we would just have enough to do what we need to do and pay the fundraising to... Because we don't want to compete for dollars either, that doesn't make sense. So ours is more about support, parental support, student support, those kinds of things, so...
I think that'll be able to bring in, make people more aware of so many programs that are out there.
Right, because we don't, you don't know what you don't know.
You don't know about now, but through SEPTA you will.
And we can have speakers come in and, you know, talk to parents, like just simple, what is an IP, what's a 504, what's, you know, just even like the basic terms. You know, we already had someone in Little Red who has twins that are three, reach out to us and say, I want to be there, you know, so it's just a way to connect people in the community together, so St. Jude's will be welcome to come. Anyone that's interested in special ed, there's no, you know, really stipulation, just as long as you're interested and want to part of it. So it's more at the district level than a building level.
And the talent show. Oh my gosh, I can't, I don't mind.
The talent show.
The talent show's coming up.
March 10th, Friday.
First additions already happened, but some people do kind of slip in on the second one if anybody's interested. Yes, I'm sorry, guys.
Has any decisions been made on your, spending your money?
You know what, yes, and I didn't want to mention anything now because it's kind of a, I'll keep it really short, yes.
Okay.
I have met with administration, Becky, myself, and Mary, I haven't commented, we had, and Peter Mash, we collected those 93 responses that we hadn't prioritized, all of our spending, and the majority of the interest was in spending funds outside. Other than the unrealistic, hey, we would love like a combined soccer, baseball, softball field, which is completely out of our mind, out of our salary. We were interested in looking at beefing up the middle school portion of the recess area, the elementary school portion of it, and we said, well, this doesn't make any sense to do two separate areas. When, when the building is redone, the staircase in the back will lead right up the hill to the main playground. Right now, the back of the school, the kids have to go, and kind of by the middle of the building, circle around up the hill, but that's going to be revamped. So we fought collectively to put money in that one specific area of the playground, making it both more friendly for the older kids, putting some things there for the older kids, putting some more benches, picnic tables in that one area, if we're going to A couple of swing sets, which everybody can use now, including the middle school kids, let's do that area. So we're going to work on that. Mary had spoken to the architect and it does not look that that area will be interfered with through construction, where some of the fields might be, things will be laid out. So we can work on that. I briefly spoke with Neil. My next step would be to go out and look to see what on the playground field goes down, who our existing playground structure is with and to contact, contact them for pricing on things that we have, sort of have ideas on what we're looking for. And I haven't had a chance to do that yet, but to talk with Neil because Neil's like, "Well, although the architect says, yes, you have to make sure that you're talking to the, the guys that are bringing the material because those guys don't know where in the architect, you know, like the truck guys are gonna lay their equipment here and the architects say, oh, no, no, they're gonna..." So it's a little bit complicated.
Lot of logistics to work out.
Right, yeah. But as soon as we can get out and kind of walk around and get in touch with people and get some pricing, it'll look, it'll go faster than you think.
Excellent, Neil.
Was it? I didn't mean it. The voice inflection that I gave.
Spot on.
Being very, you know, getting all his stuff in a row, I respect that.
Yep.
And it is more complicated. I'm sure the architect's something, ah, but probably will cause some interference.
Yep, he's got building jobs to maintain and wants it maintained.
So, yeah, we're excited.
Thank you.
I didn't want to extend the meeting. That's the next one.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, moving on to appointments and authorizations 3.0. Looks like we're gonna do a consent agenda for 3.1 through 3.4. 3.1, approve CSC CPSE recommendations as per attached. 3.2, approve Amanda Rich for a permanent teacher's aide position at $13.31 per hour effective March 3rd, 2017, ending the six year, excuse me, six month probationary period. 3.3, approve Lance Maxon for a permanent bus driver position at $16.39 per hour effective March 9th, 2017, also ending his six month probationary period. And 3.4, approval of substitutes. Looks like we have one substitute non-certified teacher, teacher's aide, $70 per day. That's Ashley Phillips. And a substitute certified teacher at $90 per day. That's Kimberly-
Maciza.
Maciza. Can I ask? Give me a second. A second. Any discussion? Anything you want to add?
Oh, Kim was with us at one point, so she's returning. She started the year and then took another job, then she's back to like to subress again. So that name looks familiar.
That's why that name looks familiar, okay.
It's a, it is.
So does that mean she takes herself off the list?
Oh, no, she'd like to, no, she wants to be on our list again.
I know, but you said she was here before and did she go off the list?
Oh, she had a full-time position with us. And then she resigned to do like another position in the district and then she would like to come back and subress now, so she's on the list now.
Okay, yes, okay, I get it. Any other questions or comments? No?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Hirakawa?
Yes.
Mr. Alanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yeah. Moving on to policies, 3.5, our first readings. Let's listen again. I'll go second. A, removal of policy 4,000, student learning objectives and district instructional goals. B, removal of policy 4,200, curriculum management. C, policy 4,311.1, display of the flag. D, regulation, 4,311.1, display of the flag. E, notice not required, 4,315.1, aids instruction. F, policy 4,321, programs for students with disabilities. G, policy 4,321.1, provision of special ed services in a, in the least restrictive environment. H, policy 4,321.2, school-wide pre-referral approaches and interventions. I, regulation 4,321.2, school-wide pre-referral approaches and interventions. J, policy 4,321.3, allocation of space for special education. K, policy 4,321.4, independent educational evaluations. L, policy 4,321.5, confidentiality and access to individualized education programs, individualized education services, programs, and service plans. M, policy 4,321.6, availability of alternative format instructional materials for students with disabilities. N, policy 4,321.7, district-wide and statewide assessments of students with disabilities. O, policy 4,321.8, impartial hearing officer appointment and compensation. P, policy 4,321.9, declassification of students with disabilities. Q, policy 4,321.10, programs and services for partially placed non-public school, non-public school students with disabilities. R, policy 4,321.11, public report on revisions of district policies, practices, and procedures upon finding a significant disproportionality. S, policy 4,321.12, use of time-out rooms and physical restraints and adversaries? What did that say? Adverses. Adversaries?
Adverses.
Adverses.
Adverses. No. T, policy 4,321.13, preschool special education. U, policy 4,321.14, special education personnel. V, removal of policy 4,322, programs for the gifted and talented. W, removal of policy 4,325, academic intervention services. X, policy 4,326, limited English proficiency instruction. Y, exhibit 4,326- E.1, programs for English language learners. Z, exhibit 4,326- E.2, programs for English language learners. Double A, policy 4,327, homebound instruction. And double B, policy 4,511, textbook selection and adoption. The policy committee has been busy.
And we met last night and added, we were gonna add eight more, but we'll save them for next time.
Okay.
We're cruising.
Done with the 4,000 series.
Is there anything you want to say about any of you? We're moving quite a few.
Great question. Basically, the committee had decided, and again, as you know, there's two sitting board members, community members, and this one actually, we had Kim Hershel represent special education. We found some of them just to be what's either called a local or an optional policy. So these were policies that were optional and that we just felt were kind of redundant for us. Again, the policy made was written for a K-12 districts typically of any varying size. We found if it didn't fit us, we, it didn't have to have been removed. After much discussion.
Do we have any questions or comments? No? Okay.
Do we motion?
I don't think we motion.
Not on the first lady.
Just for us to read.
We're cruising right along.
Okay. 4.0, old business. I don't think we have anything on the table. 5.0, I don't think there's any new business unless somebody has something. No? 6.0, informational. 6.1, our next regular Board of Ed meeting will be March 16th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. And 6.2, opportunity for the public to be heard. Has anybody signed up? No? Does anybody wanna say anything? We don't really have much of an audience. Three quarters of them have already spoken.
Come on, Matt.
Matt's been running all over the place. He's just participating.
I don't know that we need another executive session? No? Okay.[1754.54]